All right, folks, let's get the show on the road. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Study Session and Special Meeting for November 11th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please mute your cellphones and other electronic devices. I will do the same thing. Trustee Dearborn, can you lead us in the pledge tonight? Thanks.
[inaudible] [inaudible]
Okay, I'd like to ask Rob to do a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Trustee Apitoff?
Here.
Trustee Orsek?
Here.
Trustee Handler?
Here.
Trustee Dearborn?
Here.
Trustee Alvinson?
Here.
Trustee Dahlman?
Here.
President Rents?
Present.
Okay, just for clarification, tonight we have to take care of some business that kind of rolled over from last week's canceled meeting, so we're going to go through some normal council business, and then we'll begin the study session immediately thereafter. So the next order of business is public comment. This is the time of the evening when anybody in the room can come up and address the council on items that are not on this evening's agenda. So if you want to talk about the lakefront, then you come up later on. If you want to talk about everything else but the lakefront, you're welcome to come to the podium and share your thoughts with us, and you have three minutes.
I'm not real tall. Good evening. My name is Alan Simon. I'm approximately 60-year resident of Winnetka. My name is Alan Simon. I'm an approximately 60-year resident of Winnetka. I love Winnetka. Thank you for serving the community. For about 35 years, I participated, conducted, and planned board meetings such as this. I vowed when I retired I'd never go to another meeting, but I decided to come to this one for two reasons. One, I think it's important to talk about migrants, and two, I can leave after I speak. I'm here to address the council to consider facilitating and housing a couple of and adopting a couple of migrant families, vetted migrant families. I've been in discussion with several community agencies about this. I've spoken with Park District Community House. Here tonight with me is Paul Gilmore from the Presbyterian Church and Gail Eisenberg from the Nutria Township. All of these organizations are willing to offer volunteers, in-kind services, donations, and moral support. I've also spoken with the BMO Harris Bank. They're interested. I spoke with the past president of the Rotary, and she said that the Rotary members would be very interested in this type of activity, once we discussed it formally and there was some interest and possibly some action. I also spoke with village staff, including the Community Development Department and the village manager. I believe we have a responsibility as a nation to help migrants get off to a good start as they move from migrants to American citizens. According to ABC 7 News, the city of Chicago has spent about $65 million through September on migrants. Winnetka has the resources and the people to help house and support a few migrant families. There are some apartment rentals available currently. I looked yesterday, there's at least 10 that are affordable, reasonable, and I don't think this is just a Chicago issue. This will enrich our community. It is my hope that the village will pursue this item and put it on their next agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Would anybody else like to address village council? Ted.
Good evening. Thank you for the introduction, but I'm Gail Eisenberg, your Nutria Township Supervisor down the street, so I will be running over there shortly for our 7:30 meeting. I just wanted to offer a little bit of context to what Nutria Township can offer to refugee and migrant families for your vacation. Our Nutria Township food pantry that many of you have supported on personal level does serve any residents or those who work in Nutria Township. While we are seeing unprecedented usage and costs, we are a generous community, and we will be able to meet the needs of a number of families moving into the area. It's our responsibility for our neighbors to help neighbors. In addition, Nutria Township also does fund a partnership with North Suburban Legal Aid that does provide immigration legal aid services to our residents without cost. So I do thank you all for your partnership with us on many issues. We're very excited about that the streetscape is done and hope to see development across the street soon, as well as some additional pedestrian help as well to get us across the street from that parking lot. But please, at any time, feel free to contact me about ways that we can continue to partner to serve the most vulnerable members of our community.
Hello, Ted Winachenko. So I did have some prepared comments today, but those are no longer something I'm going to talk about since in the last few hours I've gotten several emails about several topics, and I clearly did not have the time to go over all of them. So while I'm happy that someone eventually responded to many of the questions or concerns that I had, it's odd, it's unfortunate, that it just seems to perpetuate this idea of delay and a, I'll say, adherence to the letter of law, of the law, as a way of minimizing its spirit. So having said that, I'll be back to talk about some of those issues. I will again like to talk about the Burtling sidewalk, just for a moment. You know, I am concerned because the council acted in closed session on matters that I believe were outside the scope of the exemption. The Attorney General appears to have decided that my timing of my request was reasonable and asked the village to send more documents. And rather than do that, the village sent back a response saying that they wanted a formal determination of the timeliness of my request before they would respond. And I find this all shocking, right? First, it's a waste of my tax dollars, right? The attorney doesn't need to keep billing to keep things secret from the public. They just don't. Second, the idea that the Attorney General is like a court of law that has a duty to make a determination on standing prior to ruling, I mean, this is all ridiculous. The OMA and the FOIA and with the review are not legal kind of court cases, they are ways for lay public to find information. And finally, the information I'm seeking is from closed sessions for a matter that has been apparently settled by the council. There is no reason to keep it secret at this point, unless, of course, there is a reason to keep it secret, which obviously is the concern that I have. So as I've said before, that sidewalk, if you haven't signed it over yet, you still have the opportunity to repeal it. The property owners did not follow the ordinance, they did not pay the money on time, and I believe that the village should repeal that and discuss it. And by the way, that's a reason why I have so many FOIA requests, because I've actually gone to the time and effort to look at the underlying history behind these issues, rather than just getting together in closed session and deciding that, oh yeah, let's give this land away to someone without any benefit to the village and with the loss of my tax dollars. So again, I would ask you to release the closed session transcripts and repeal the ordinance.
Thank you, Ted. Anybody else? Sure.
Aw, shoot.
Thanks for stopping by. I'm envious.
I'd like to start by thanking the village for their great educational efforts regarding the lakefront and share my key takeaways from their experts. January 10th, 2023 study session, he had five key takeaways for me. Soren Hall, senior project manager at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, described at minute marker 11:05, the evolution of protective elements from first-gen sealed groynes to revetment to current best practices of partial or total stone breakwaters. At minute mark 3530, that without protection, the shoreline could erode an additional mile inland, and at minute marker 3805, there is an inherent need for shoreline protection regardless of high or low water levels. At minute marker 4230, in response to a question from trustee Dearborn, he stated that the goal of the U.S. Army Corps is to inspect 10% of their permitted projects per year, but that nationally they have inspected, quote unquote, "way more" since completion. Steve Altman of the IDNR stated at minute marker 4924, that Illinois has 63 miles of lakefront and 83% of it is armored with groynes, revetment, or partial or total stone breakwaters. September 12th, 2023, Caleb Barth, Associate Principal of Baird Associates Coastal Engineers, described at minute 1817, that landward erosion 50 years ago was approximately 8 to 10 inches per year, but that human development had significantly slowed that erosion. And at minute 2307, that original structures were not designed for the deeper, more powerful waves that result from lakebed downcutting and caused further erosion. My timestamps are not a substitute for viewing these entire study sessions, but rather highlight key facts from experts like those that we at the Winnetka Park District have relied on for our beach restoration and bluff protection work over the past 20 years, continuing to update our standards to current best practices. We have permit drawings prepared for our plans at Elder Centennial, and I have brought a hard copy for each trustee, Rob Bayhand, David Shune, and Jim Bernal. I have left them with Kristin. Copies are available for the public on our website. I have invited each trustee to meet with me to discuss these permit plans and understand how we have built-in support and accommodation for the village elements as they complete their southeast Winnetka stormwater survey and study the village stormwater discharge location at Elder. I believe the cooperation of the village, the Park District, District 36 and Nutria at Stormwater, the Stormwater Project can be repeated in our project at Elder Centennial. So many of us want Elder Centennial to be repaired, protected, and accessible to all residents, and most important, open and enjoyed. I look forward to celebrating with fellow Winnetkins when we reopen the golf course in summer 2024, and I look forward to celebrating with Winnetkins when we get Elder Centennial repaired, protected, accessible, and most importantly, open. It's a single-season construction project, and we would love to cut a ribbon together with you to open the 2025 beach season. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none? Is it, if it's on the lakefront, Katie, that's got to wait till the second part? Okay.
Hi, my name is Katie Stevens. Thank you all for serving. I wanted to make my remarks regarding the Park District. The goal of the Park District was to have a thousand-foot united beach, and it is anything but united. It has $14 million worth of rocks in the lake separating the beach into three segments. Our views will be lost, which I've told you, from Wa Keegan to Gilston Park. We will lose 100 feet of beaches with rocks alone, and they'll pose a risk both above and below the water. We need two piers, not rock balls, like they're suggesting. It appears that these rocks are meant to preserve the adjacent homeowner's privacy. They certainly don't serve our needs. Particularly on the southern end of Centennial, the homeowner is putting in his own rocks 125 feet out into the beach, and the sand accretes on the north side, so we will benefit from his wall. We do not need a wall next to a wall, next to a dog park wall in the middle of the park. So instead of having a chain-linked fence, which is what they put up January 17th, the Park District, we are going to have approximately, my understanding, is a $3 million pile of rocks, 200, I don't know, several hundred feet out into the lake. And I don't think we need three walls of rocks that is not uniting our beach. The biggest thing that is my frustration is that the swimming beach is next to a sewer pipe, and they want to move the sewer pipe to the north end. Okay, so basically what you're saying is that you guys are the stewards and the forefathers that keep us safe and healthy, and that is your job. That's my understanding of what you guys do. So you're going to have us swimming next to the sewer pipe, which granted is pushed out further, but none of our forefathers would ever put a sewer pipe on the north end and the swimming end on the north end. The land was once a sanitarium, sold to a developer and taken by eminent domain. Why would we give this precious land away? Take it in eminent domain. The Park District has spent $1 million. We have nothing to show for it. I believe this land is our parkland, not anyone else's.
Thank you, Katie. Anyone else like to speak on items not related to the agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and we will move forward. Item five is the approval of the consent agenda, and I will ask the village clerk to read the items on the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Wishful thinking, folks, I moved ahead too quick. We'll move back to item four, establishment of the consent agenda. Does any trustee wish to remove any items on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? At motion carries, we'll move forward. Now, item five is the approval of the consent agenda, and I will now ask the village clerk again to read the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Rents. Approval of the village council minutes for October 10th, 2023 study session and special meeting, and October 17th, 2023 regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated October 13th, 2023 through November 2nd, 2023 in the amount of $1,855,786.21. Resolution Number R 962023, appointing the village treasurer for a two-year term. Resolution Number R 972023, GIS annual contract renewal for adoption, and approval of the village council meeting schedule for 2024.
Thanks, Rob. All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved.
That'll be a roll call vote.
Trustee Dahlman?
Yes.
Trustee Apitoff?
Yes.
Trustee Orsek?
Yes.
Trustee Handler?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Alvinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
At motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving along. Item six is the lakefront regulations discussion. Tonight, village council, staff, and Baird Associates, the village coastal engineer, will continue discussing lakefront property zoning and development regulations, including the consolidation of lots, I always stumble on the steep slope regulations, and review of draft ordinances. No formal action will be taken on these ordinances as tonight's meeting, other than to provide staff with further direction on how council wants to proceed. And we'll start out with Community Development Director David Shown. So David, you can take it away.
Good evening, President Rents and village trustees. Also with us this evening is Jim Bernal, village engineer, and Caleb Barth with Baird Associates, our coastal engineering consultant. They, along with the village manager, the village attorney, assistant village manager, assistant community development director, and myself, have worked together to prepare what I'm going to present this evening to you. At your September study session, the village council reviewed a description of bluffs and the role they play in our ecosystem, the existing development conditions of the lake bluff slopes located on privately owned land in the village. You also received a brief summary of existing Winnetka zoning and development regulations that apply to lakefront properties, and you also received a review of bluff regulations from Camelworth and Glencoe, which are communities that have bluffs most similar to ours here in Winnetka. At the conclusion of that meeting, the council directed staff to further study our plat of consolidation standards regarding the size of newly created lots, the use of the ordinary high-water mark as the new frontline standard, and bluff steep slope regulations with a focus on the Glencoe approach to regulating slopes. For the council's discussion, staff has prepared a draft ordinance amending the village's zoning and subdivision processes for the creation of a new single family, for the creation of new single-family lots through the village's lot consolidation process. As proposed, if a plat of consolidation would result in a lot either two times the required minimum lot size or two times the required minimum average lot width, the applicant must request special use permit approval. The proposed amendment would apply to all single-family residential zoning districts. Two times the minimum lot area requirement was selected as the standard for when special use approval would be required due to the fact that approximately 95% of the single-family residentially zoned lots in the community are less than two times the minimum lot area of their respective zoning districts. The width of a lot can also significantly impact the character of a block face in a neighborhood. This table summarizes the lot width requirements by zoning districts. This image and the next image I will show you show varying lot widths and illustrate how allowing a lot width more than two times the required minimum lot width could have a less-than-desirable impact on the character of a neighborhood. This is a block face in the R5 Single Family Residential District, which is the village's most dense single-family residential district. This image is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District. Both of these images were presented in the staff report that you received. Together, the R5 District, which is shown here in white, and the R2 District in the lime green, make up 73% of all the single-family residential lots in the community. And as a reminder, all the lots in the community with steep slopes along the lake bluff are zoned, the R2 District. However, as you will notice, not all lots zoned R2 are located along the lake. No matter the single-family residential zoning district, an applicant requesting a lot consolidation that would result in a lot two times the minimum required lot area would need to request special use permit approval. Currently, a plat of consolidation without any zoning variations would only need to be reviewed by the plan commission. Under the proposed code amendment, that would remain the same if a special use was also required. It should be noted that if a zoning variation is required for the creation of the new large lot, the variation request would continue to be reviewed by the zoning board of appeals in addition to the plan commission's review of the plat of consolidation and special When considering a special use required for a lot of consolidation, the commission and council are asked to consider whether the proposed lot would be inconsistent with the general lot area, average lot width, or character of properties located adjacent to or on the same block face of the subject lot. And in addition to this standard, the applicant would need to demonstrate compliance with the general special use standards, and those have been provided in the staff report and are shown here on this slide. In addition, the code amendment states that the village can place conditions on the proposed consolidated lot. The ones here are only illustrative that are listed in the ordinance. The council always has the discretion to apply other conditions as part of a special use process. So before I move on, are there any questions? Otherwise, I'll move on to the steep slope.
Can you quantify the materialistic context of greater than two times the minimum required lot size or two times the minimum required average lot width? I mean, what, I'm having trouble seeing the distinction there. The average lot width versus the minimum?
[inaudible]
Right, but what, I mean, would there be much difference in those two calculations?
Generally, there would not be unless the depth of lots, especially like in the R5 District, are not as deep as they typically are, then you could not reach the two times the minimum lot area, but create a lot that's two times greater than the minimum average lot width. Generally, they'll go hand in hand, but there can be circumstances, given the depth of the lots, given the width, and then the width, that it may not meet, may not be two times greater than the minimum lot area, but could be greater than two times the average lot width.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Any other questions? Okay, move along, David.
As a refresher from the September study session, for zoning purposes for lots abutting the lake, the water's edge is defined as a front lot line, and the required minimum setback in the R2 District along that lot line is 50 feet. The designation of what is the front lot line along the lake impacts these zoning measurements and standards. The lake water level impacts what is allowed at a particular point in time, and what is allowed will vary at times depending upon the lake level. These aerial photos and contour lines on this slide are from 2017. The contour lines, which are from Cook County, are the most recent contour lines we have for all properties within the community. The yellow line is the ordinary high watermark, which is set by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for Lake Michigan, which was set at the 581.5 grade elevation in January of 1992. As you will note, on some properties, the ordinary high watermark is on land, the image on the left, while on other properties, the ordinary high watermark is under the water of the lake, the image on the right. These images are for the same two properties as the previous images. The difference is the aerials in these images are from 2022, but still using the 2017 contour lines. In 2022, the lake level appear, levels appear higher than in 2017, which was the date of the aerials used on the previous slide. As noticed, as noted in these images, the ordinary high watermark is shown in the same location, however, the water level has changed. So the benefits of using the ordinary high watermark for the front lot line for zoning purposes is that it changes, changes much less frequently than the water's edge. The limitations are that the Army Corps of Engineers can change the ordinary high watermark designation for Lake Michigan at some point in the future, and also, the location of the 581.5 elevation on a property can change over time to erosion and accretion. The proposed amendments that will, that we will review next would require lakefront property owners property owner, owners to comply with steep slope regulations. Given the steep slope regulations would be more restrictive than our standard zoning requirements, those regulations would govern what would be constructed landward of the toe of the bluff, which is where the slope becomes greater than 5.9 degrees or 10%. From a zoning perspective, any area between the ordinary high watermark and the toe of the bluff would need to meet the 50-foot setback requirement. Based upon a review of our GIS database, it would appear that nearly all lots along the lake, the 50-foot setback would cover this area between the ordinary high watermark and the toe of the bluff. But for other lots, which tend to have steep beaches, portions, portions would fall outside of the setback area. However, these areas generally fall within the floodplain and would need to meet floodplain requirements, and they may also require other permitting approvals from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer. As previously stated, the council directed staff to further study and present bluff, steep slope regulations incorporating elements from the Glencoe regulations. The council expressed an interest with the Glencoe approach as the zones for each lot are based upon the specifics of the slope on a lot rather than met, than a set measurement as most other communities on the North Shore use. Given the varying heights and steepness of slopes in Winnetka, the council found the Glencoe approach the most appropriate for our community. The draft ordinance includes key slope definitions, which are illustrated in the image on this slide. The draft ordinance only allows certain structures within the steep slope zone, noted in red here on the slide. However, it allows any structure within the slope transition area, which is noted in a magenta color, subject to certain conditions and standards being met. I would briefly like to explain in general terms how the proposed steep slope regulations would impact different properties. As was presented at the September study session, as the height of the bluff and the steepness of the slope vary, the steep slope zone and the slope transition areas will vary. This image contains a bluff on the left that is 30 feet tall and a bluff on the right that is 70 feet tall. However, the actual slope of both bluffs is the same, 27 degrees. For the bluff that is taller, the one on the right, the steep slope zone extends a little farther back on the table land than it does on the other bluff that is not as tall. And again, for the bluff that is taller, the slope transition area also extends farther back on the table land than it does on the bluff that's not as tall. This image contains bluffs of the same height, 70 feet. However, the bluff on the left has a slope of 27 degrees, while the bluff on the right has a slope of 33.8 degrees. You will notice, for the bluff with the steeper slope, which is on the right, the steep slope zone extends farther back on the table land than it does on the bluff slope that's not as steep. Also, for the bluff with the steeper slope, again, on the right, the slope transition area itself remains the same depth as, as that of the bluff that is not as steep, however, it extends farther back on the table land due to the increased depth of the steep slope The reason behind this is that a slope, as a slope gets taller and steeper, the bluff becomes less stable, and thus, the area of the steep slope zone and the overall slope impact area becomes larger. One additional factor in determining a bluff slope is that it may be made up of compound slopes. That is, rather than one steady slope, a simple slope, a compound slope is a slope composed of one or more distinguishable slopes with different grade angles. As illustrated in this image, this compound slope has a gentler slope that is greater than 10%, and then has a steeper slope much greater than 10%. The steep slope zone includes both the gentler area and the steeper slope area, the latter, which is determined by the application of the steep slope line, which is a two-to-one slope line or 27 degrees. The method, the method used to calculate steep slope, the steep slope zone and the slope transition area is dependent upon the height of the bluff and the steepness of the slope, as well as whether or not the bluff is a simple slope or compound slope. Given this, it is difficult to illustrate the potential impact on each lakefront property without individually looking at each property parcel by parcel. To do such would take staff approximately a month or more for the GIS consultant and staff to work to complete, together to complete such work, should the council request that these be created. As was noted in the staff report, there would be some limitations to the approach we would use, as our database only includes topographical lines from 2017, so they do not reflect changes to topography that property and owners may have made since then. Also, the placement of topo lines on the top of aerial photographs has some limits in terms of its degree of accuracy. The creation of such maps would be our best estimate and an approximation of where the slope impact area would be on a lot. Based upon the visual survey results that staff shared with the council in September, and which are included on this slide, we know there are lakefront properties along the lake that contain structures on the steep slopes that would not be allowed had the proposed ordinance been in place when the structure, when the structures were constructed. Some of the structures noted in this table would be considered legally non-conforming, which means they could remain but be subject to legally non-conforming regulations in the village zoning ordinance. As proposed, the ordinance would allow limited development within the steep slope zone, which would include decks of a limited size, retaining walls for the purpose of slope stabilization, stairs and steps of a certain dimension, mechanical or electrical lifts, fences, and the rebuilding or remodeling of structures, but only on suitable existing The ordinance also identifies the process by which an applicant can appeal the decision of the engineering director that would be appealed to the village manager. Any decision of the village manager would be appealed to the village council. In addition, the ordinance allows a property owner to request a variation of this chapter, and the zoning board of appeals would determine if the effects of this chapter constitute a practical difficulty or unreasonable hardship. And the ordinance identifies enforcement mechanisms and corrective measures the village may pursue. So in summary, we presented to you zoning and subdivision code amendments that address the size of newly created lots through the lot consolidation process, code amendment to use the ordinary high watermark as a new front line, front lot line standard, and then bluff steep slope regulations with focus on a, on Glencoe as a model. And with that, I and Jim and Caleb would be happy to answer any questions you may
The last time we met on this issue, we didn't have a lot of time to talk, and it was very late in the evening. As much as I, I believe and treasure our, our public input on this, I would like to hear preliminarily where council falls before I open it up for public comment. That'll give us a chance to do this when we're fresh, so you can, you know, in addition to asking questions to staff, I'd really like to hear from all of you where you are on the various items here. And I've also got some fill-in-the-blanks that maybe we can return to after everything is said and done. So whoever wants to lead it off, go ahead, but questions or comments on the proposed ordinances?
David, it might be helpful for the people in the audience who may not have had an opportunity to read the actual proposed language of the ordinance, to walk through this idea of exceptional engineering a little bit, or Jim, you know, kind of talk about, because I think people are probably, so before we, I think that might help our discussion, talking about what structures might be permitted and, you know, what steps people would need to take, just so we all have that same understanding as part of the discussion before we give, is that okay?
That's fine. What is exceptional engineering?
That's my point.
It's, it's more of a term of, of the requirements that we would look at when we evaluate each individual project. So for example, let's, let's say a lot that's not along the bluff. Somebody wants to put a patio in the back. We wouldn't require them to put, provide geotechnical types of information, evaluate stability for their neighbors, things like that. We would evaluate on a case-by-case basis on the size and what they're proposing. Because of the sensitivity of the bluff, we would require the additional engineering standards be met, that would be geotechnical, coastal engineer review, a structural engineering view, a civil engineer review that hits on a multitude of different types of studies, you know, such as, are you meeting IPA requirements, U.S. Army Corps, things like that. So all of that exceptional engineering would be above and beyond what we would require for a standard parcel, maybe that doesn't have the same sensitivity to it. Does that, does that help explain?
Yeah, and that would be for developments proposed in the steep slope zone.
That's correct.
Right.
You want to share your thoughts on, on any of this at this point?
I'm gonna let other people speak.
Just go for it, Kim.
First of all, thank you. I know Tina, Bridget worked with Ben, Peter, all of you to put this together. It's great to have something more concrete to react to as we've gone over the last, I guess, starting in January, we're going on 11 months here. Overall, I, I like the whole general philosophy, direction, et cetera. I have a few things that are, there are tweaks that I'd like to throw out. Some are minor, some are major, or not major, but more significant. The first one being, I guess, I've, gosh, I've done so much homework, and Caleb, you're gonna help with this here. I understand that the 581.5 for the ordinary high watermark is the factor that the Army Corps of Engineers has used in the IDNR. However, I guess I'm learning that best practice is really to have a coastal engineer, I guess, delineate the ordinary high watermark on a custom basis for each property, and that can vary one to two feet. And if you do the simple geography or geometry of a right triangle, the math, one foot change could make a serious difference in how the steep slope is calculated in what construction. So if that is a best practice, I would lean toward, because we are a smaller community, we could, it might be practical to adopt that for us versus using a bigger average that the IDNR is using. Thoughts?
That is correct. You know, typically, they would leave some discretion in defining where the ordinary high watermark is. I'd also like to add, they, it's not only the, you know, when the DNR looks, looks at a project, they don't only use the ordinary high watermark, it's also the toe of the bluff, and they generally follow whatever is the most restrictive for, for that site. And they can go beyond that as well. So there definitely is, when the DNR regulates, they definitely do have some discretion on the area that they regulate.
Okay. So that was one point that I'd like to throw for, oh, I'm sorry, David.
Just as a point of clarification, the ordinary high watermark is only being used for, in the proposed amendments, is only being used for the front lot line designation, not for the steep slope designation.
Oh, okay, I guess I, so I, correct me, see, I'm not a pro at this learning. But it, it sounds like that, obviously, that is a key piece of data that we're going to be relying on. And so, again, my point was that if there's a better practice or a best practice, my leaning would be to implement it in our community.
If we're just talking about the ordinary high watermark for zoning.
For whatever, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, but, but there, that was the piece, I think, that David was, was trying to hit on, that, that part of the problem, or one of the problems that's been, concerns that's been expressed, is that using the water line as the point which you measure your setbacks from is problematic because the water line moves, right? So the idea with the ordinary high watermark was to say, okay, we're just gonna lock it down here, so it's always the same for everybody, whether you're on the far south end.
And people can plan accordingly, right. So I like the idea fixed. Again, my point is that if we're going to use that as a factor, and there's a best practice, I would encourage us to follow a best practice.
Okay. So can you clarify, are we using that as a factor in the steep slope?
No, even for zoning, I guess I'm saying if that's a number that we're using.
Well, wait, I guess I'm trying to understand, because I thought that was a sort of variation that we were trying to get away from. Or can you clarify that a little bit more? Because I thought by going to the standard set in 1992, that would be the snapping the line of which we can then, you know, understand what the setback is, the 50-foot setback, right?
No, they even acknowledge, the ordinary high watermark can change slightly, not as much as, what, what's the other term that we've been using? Just the water's edge, which can change, as we've seen, by quite a large amount. But I mean, it still does make it, it still does make a difference. So, you know, I guess, I, we don't necessarily have to dig into that deep here. You were asking sort of an over, oh, well, I guess that's what I'm saying, how much do we want to dig into each point? So we can all discuss that a little more, but if that's best, help me out here.
So maybe I just mentioned one more thing, and I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, we're, when you think of the three definitions, ordinary high watermark, actually going to the site, have a coastal engineer define where the ordinary high watermark is at one point in time, and the water's edge, the ordinary high watermark, the 581.5, it does vary, but it varies the least amount of the three terms.
It varies, oh, I'm sorry.
It, it varies the least amount of those three terms.
But correct me if I'm wrong, if, I mean, for instance, if 581.5, that's what a property in the lake uses, but property's right next to it, well, whether Elder at Lloyd measure at 583, I mean, we should make that, I mean, I don't, I think your thought was, don't rely on something that's.
It's just a, of, of average based on, what do we have, 63 miles of lakefront? That perhaps we come up with one ultimately that's the Winnetka, that there's a, there's a different average.
They measured higher, like, I think Elder measured a 583, and then, and there's been higher measurements recently within the last year.
But I think that, just for clarification, so the ordinary high watermark is used because it's the most stable of the numbers that don't change. I think what you're referring to is you have base flood elevations that change. If you remember when we had the, the maps up here, you can look at different sections of the lake, that elevation changes due to the land, but the base flood, or I'm sorry, the ordinary high watermark we're talking about is the consistent line that we're using just for the zoning setback component of it.
Okay, I understand, well, I guess I understand it, that it's an average that the IDNR and the Army Corps of Engineers, one of those, has come up with and is using.
For, it's.
And there, and then everyone has chosen to say, okay, if that's what they, they're using for everybody, that will be the standard. But there is a better practice to delineate it at a specific property.
Delineate, what exactly?
The ordinary high watermark.
For zoning.
For zoning.
Because doesn't one foot equal 21, one foot from 581.5 to 582.5, is 20, is that 20 feet approximately a beach?
I'm not sure.
Can you say that one more time?
Wait, so where we, I mean, so maybe it would be helpful to understand when you say there's a better practice, or where is that coming from? Because I thought we were just trying to set the line from which.
I guess I have to say, I didn't bring it all, but I mean, I've looked at dozens of studies at coastal engineering sites. I'm not a coastal engineer, but I've been looking at what other communities do. And it seems like that, I understand that is a better, that's just the best practice. Is 581.5 bad and wrong? No, if we're all happy with that number, fine. But again, I'm saying if we're gonna change it, and there is a better practice to, because I think one of the things we were talking about is recognizing that Winnetka isn't necessarily the same as Lake Forest, isn't necessarily the same as Willmet. And that if this would be just one more element, that we're acknowledging that perhaps every property might be a little different, and we define it that way, and let.
Well, there's no question that, I agree that.
Then we're consistent with what our.
Well, I'm confused now.
Yeah, because I thought this, the ordinary, it was just the standard established for consistency in 1992. It is subject to change.
Correct.
I suppose other people could take a different number for purposes, and this is only to set the setback for 50 feet. It's not, it's just for the zoning setback.
For clarification, though, it wouldn't, it doesn't apply once you get to the steep slope. So no matter what you use, no matter, even if you use, let's go, I'm not sure what study you're referring to and how they're determining, I'm not familiar. But if, even when you get to that point, once you get to the bottom of the toe of the bluff, what's classified as the toe of the bluff for the steep slope, then that changes. And then you, then we're following the steep slope ordinances that are proposed, but that doesn't have anything to do with the setback component.
Well, there's one thing I'm concerned, I'm confused about, and help me under, is 581 an arbitrary number? I mean, when you go up to Tower Beach, is the high, ordinary high watermark different than when you're down at Centennial Beach?
Two things to mention. The ordinary high watermark, 581.5, was established for Lake Michigan and Lake Huron. So it's not just this stretch of shoreline. Probably, Robert, what you were mentioning, where 582 or higher was established for other sites.
Recently, yeah.
Yep. The Great Lakes fluctuate six feet, the median water level, those elevations were established during the recent high water levels. So it's, that's why it's so high, those points in time where that ordinary high watermark was established at 582.
To Ken's point, I was just trying to get it tailored to, because everybody's concerned, we're not Highland Park, we're not Lake Forest. So I get it, I agree. So if, should we be as current and custom to what our beaches say than just the 1992 mark, which is an average of different lakes?
Yeah, so I, at one point in time.
I'm just asking the question.
I mean, at one point in time, the water level's not that different between us and Highland Park. It's, water levels fluctuate over time. And so if you have a project, you're regulating it through the DNR, through the state, yes, you can, at that point in time, what is the ordinary high watermark? And it could be, could be lower than 581, it could be higher than 581.5. But it's just, that was the elevation that was established in, it was 1985, but it was adopted in 1992. It probably will be updated again in the next five to 10 years. It's been delayed, the update's been delayed a little bit. But that, in that elevation is consistent across Lake Michigan and Lake Huron.
So everybody uses, if you're, if you're talking about ordinary high watermark, whether you're in Winnetka or Grand Rapids, or.
Holland.
Holland.
Mauna Kea. It's 581. Five. Generally, yes. It's, but some states have different definitions, regulate differently. For the federal ordinary high watermark is 581.5.
Right. So the US Army Corps of Engineer, if we're talking about that, we could, I mean, so, but I, I want to hear your.
I pulled out this report.
But Kim, are we trying to solve for making sure that there's enough setback? Like, I get that other, so what are we trying to solve for by changing or customizing the ordinary high watermark? Because otherwise, it's just the water's edge, right? We're always gonna be moving.
I think I've mentioned three things. One, we, I think we've made, or I guess I've made, I've expressed thoughts that I feel that whatever we will do with all this should have some flexibility to recognize that we do have three different kinds of bluff zones, and commit to residents that we are looking, we will look carefully at their unique property. That would be one. Two, if it's a better practice, I just assume do a better practice. I'll put a better practice in place. If we're gonna start something new, I guess I normally don't say, well, let's just go with.
No, I'm not saying that, but I think we currently are measuring it from the water's edge, right?
Is there a more consistent standard that we can apply that's fair? I guess it's a bigger question.
So I think we are, I mean, we could stick with that, I suppose, right? Because that's gonna be tailored to everybody's property, based on where the water's edge. Because that's, that fluctuant, I mean, that's the most tailored.
Well, we know we want to get rid of that. Okay, here, for instance, I did pull out this, this report prepared by a coastal engineer who's looked at some recent projects that we've done. And here, I guess, for the Elder Centennial project that was submitted in '22, the ordinary high watermark was 583. 151 Sheridan was 584. The ordinary high watermark for Kennelworth was 582.3.
Okay, stop. I want to hear what you guys have to say. How can that be if it's 581.5? And how can, for this guy, or this report, or wherever, wherever Kim pulled that from, how can it be different? How can, how can somebody be saying it's 583 when the Army Corps says it's 581?
Water levels fluctuate, and so.
Well, we're not talking about water levels, we're talking about an elevation.
The establishment of the ordinary high watermark is related to water levels, and it's related to the water levels and waves impact on the shoreline. There's a definable feature that you can identify, you can identify where that ordinary high watermark is at that time. And so if you went back to that same project, you know, so recently, we've had high water levels 10 years ago. If you went back to, you established the ordinary high watermark at any of those sites, the ordinary high watermark would probably be less than 581.5.
I'm lost.
Okay, so maybe, maybe this would help, because I'm lost too. So there's a federal designation, right? They've snapped the line, they're gonna update it, they will update it. But then, a project applicant can petition to establish a different ordinary high water? Or is it, because, I mean, it sounds like this comes up in the context of IDNR permits. So is that a process that you can appeal to change it, or you just try to customize your own OHWM, I guess?
I think in general, so the DNR would regulate to the ordinary high watermark or the toe of the bluff. Typically, in Winnetka, the toe of the bluff will be at a higher elevation, so they would regulate farther than the ordinary high watermark. Yes, you can look at one, you can, you can look at that, that point in time. So, you know, we recently went over, you know, six years plus of high water levels. And so over this snapshot of time, this is generally where the ordinary high water level is. But it's, you know, applying it that way, you know, looking at one point in time, you do, do a survey of the site, where, where is that identifying mark where the ordinary high watermark occurs? Yeah, you come back at a different point in time 10 years ago, and it's much lower elevation. It changes, yeah.
Rather than get bogged out on this, why don't, maybe one of the takeaways here is, this is all better than the water's edge, we know that. And maybe you can come back with a little bit of context around best practices and this type of, but I think we're getting.
But if, right, I was gonna say, if it's, if nobody's convinced.
We're gonna have to resolve this stuff, though, Bob.
No, I know that, but we're not making any decisions tonight.
It's not, it's not.
So they can come back.
It's not a huge difference. I mean, I wanted to raise it, I think it's an interesting call. But if, if we all live with 581.5, and a few years from now, we find, oh, maybe that there's a better practice, we can always tweak it a little bit. It's not gonna make a substantial change. I was looking for, starting off with, what might be the latest greatest.
But it might be helpful to share.
I have a couple other questions, but I've had enough time for now.
No.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, just for clarification, though, so to Caleb's point, though, the 581.5 is the historical long-range adaptation of where the ordinary high watermark is for Lake Michigan. The report, I think, that you're referring to, it doesn't, to Caleb's point, it's just a snapshot in time. It's a shorter duration, and it averages out from there. It depends on what the purpose of the studies you have to put into the context of what the point of the study was. That's why the regulatory agencies chose the 581.5, because it's the long-term consistent average. So if you remember the chart that, I believe it was Soren or Steve Altman shared, that showed the fluctuations of the lake over time, that's why it goes all the way back to 1992. So it, that is the long-term, that was the.
Okay, so that, again, so we're, that's fine. We're acknowledging we're gonna take a long-term average and work off of that. But it's, well, at least we're making a conscious choice on that and not just defaulting to it. I'll hop back to the consolidation. I think that's great. I had one little suggestion. When there are, let's see, what page is it? There were like seven items that we could, the village council could use some judgment on, in terms of it was like, well, if something is, if they're looking for a special permit, we could look at GFA and permeable surface. I guess I'd like to add one, that would be any significant changes to the topography that would make the lot or the property inconsistent with, or inconsistent with the neighboring property, or the nature of the neighborhood, and/or, you know, a significant change from the natural terrain. Doesn't happen that often, has happened. I realize we currently have a clause that addresses topographical changes, but I believe we say, as long as they're mitigated for stormwater purposes, so if someone builds up huge berms, or builds a toboggan hill on their property, as long as they mitigate the stormwater, they're okay. But I feel that that would be something that we might want to have input on, should someone change it. Pardon?
I think the last clause gives us the freedom to do that on a case by case basis, because I think there's also height restrictions on this, height of structures, right? So we, we prevent people from adding substantial fill to their lot to do that, I think, existing.
We aren't bound by the, by the standards like the zoning board is, though. I mean, we can, Ben, don't get worried, but we can be, we can be totally arbitrary in deliberations as a village council when it comes to these special use permits.
Don't use that word. Please don't use that.
Well, I mean, no, but I mean, but we can, we can pull out.
It's common sense, the philosophy of our zoning.
We are bound by the standards.
Philosophy of our comp plan, yeah.
Is that right, Ben? We are not bound by the standards that are used for the other?
Well, there's plant commission standards, but they're all, but we cannot be arbitrary, our decision.
Okay.
So we.
That's why I have you here.
It's the Lissell factor in decisions, but, yeah, so I wouldn't use arbitrary, but there is more flexibility. But that said, I think that if you look at the standards for the special use that we provided, you know, one of the things you'll see is that the character of properties located adjacent to or in the same block face of the subject property, the character. And I think the character would take in play, take into account topography changes. So if you have drastic differences of the neighboring properties because of topography, whether you're trying to create it, or it's natural, or whatever the reason may be, you have broad latitude to consider.
Okay.
That character, that would be part of it.
Okay, I'll remember that one. No, and that, because it doesn't happen that often, but think about it, a very large lot would have the flexibility to make some significant changes if they, I'm using a silly example, wanted to build a toboggan hill on their property with a little, with a sway, a moat on the other side. But, okay, so if that's covered, then I'm, if we feel that's covered in the more general statement, I'm good with that. The other item I had related to going back into the steep slope related to boat houses. I felt that it would be in the better interest of even the residents to have a better defined term than a two-boat boathouse. I've noticed that a lot of other communities either define the width, they define the square footage, they define the height, they give some more concrete parameters, which I think would make more sense for us to put in. I also noticed other communities don't allow any plumbing. And I guess we have in here that we would allow, I think it said toilet or plumbing or something like that.
Restrooms and showers, I think.
Yeah.
Well, probably better than letting it go into the lake.
I don't know what the, what that'll sound. The other thing is, I've noticed other communities have references to specifically making a statement that any, there are no construction elements that are in the boathouse for anything other than the purpose of storage of boat or equipment. So a little, a little more defined. I thought about why, or tried to understand why they wouldn't allow plumbing. I guess I was reading that.
Go ahead, Ben.
So in some communities, the reason that you don't allow plumbing is so it's not a habitable structure. And so part of it is, if you allow plumbing, you allow heat, kitchens, you know, that type of issue, you do have the risk of somebody living in there is a second residence on a single-family house lot. And so this has come up a lot with the accessory dwelling unit conversation, is what do you allow? And the same thing would be true in a garage, you know, above a garage, or some other type of structure. So that's a big part of it, I think, in some communities, is prohibiting that so it doesn't turn into another house on the property. But it's a policy decision of what you want to do.
It is a policy decision, and I don't know how much we would be concerned about that. I mean, I understand that the other thought from a scientific perspective, again, Caleb, I'll ask you to jump in, is if you have to run plumbing, you have to go like six to eight, six to seven feet down, you have to trench down to get it under the freeze line, so the pipes don't freeze in Chicago, which I guess they would. And obviously, that's digging into the, probably the table land, the slope transition, and into the bluffs to get plumbing down there, which could be quite disruptive. If the pipe ever leaks, you know, we've all know how insidious water can be, and it could leak for years, and people didn't even realize that, which could destabilize the slope. So I guess there are, in addition to the reasons Ben mentioned, it sounds like there also might be some, I'll say, scientific reasons why not to do that. So I'm throwing that out there. I don't know if everybody's thought about that, if that's something we feel is important and.
Can we talk about boat houses?
Yep.
Since we're on the topic?
Yep.
I mean, I have a slew of questions about that.
Okay.
And maybe if we do topic by topic.
Go for it, boat houses.
Boat houses.
So, I mean, first, here's my general feeling. In responding to the residents' concerns about any regulation on the steep slope area, it's basically taken away from their ability to use whatever they want to use their property for. And I think this is a positive thing. Allowing structures, and I think we should talk about, you know, plumbing and all these things. But this is, this is a, it's a little bit of an olive branch to allow the homeowners to still maintain their, whatever you want to say, highest and best use. Having flexibility, I do like the way it's worded. I have some questions about it. I'm not necessarily in favor of limiting, you know, like plumbing, or necessarily how it is used. I don't object to the way it's worded right now. And I think this is a, it's a positive for the homeowners that, from my understanding, not a lot of other communities have, where they could build an improved structure, adds value to the property, that's not just in the land, and provides them significant enjoyment down at the lake, and not just store things, but to actually use the facility or the structure. The way it's worded right now, we have a 15-foot height. I'm curious where that number came from, if there was any logic to the 15-foot height, and then.
It's our.
Go ahead.
It's our standard accessory structure.
Okay.
Yeah, most communities are 11 to 14.
I mean, I'd be curious to know.
Generous to do 14.
If folks really use this for boats, and they have the motorized tractors, trailers that bring the boats up, what's the typical height of a boat that would be on Lake Michigan that somebody would want to store in there? What's the height on the tractor, trailer? Like, is that appropriate when you factor in the structure? And then the second part of the question is, is it 15-foot? If it has a ridge to the ridge line, if it's a flat roof, is it just to the, the top of the roof?
It's to the top of the structure.
Okay. And then there's nothing in there right now that's prohibiting using the top of the structure if it's a flat roof, correct? Do we have anything that would limit someone if it's a flat roof to be able to use the top as like a patio?
No, there's nothing that would limit it.
Okay. I mean, generally, I bring this up because I, the way it is, I'm like, hey, if it just ends up the way it is, like, there's a lot of flexibility for homeowners to be able to add value through, you know, the built environment as a part of their, their property that adds value and enjoyment. I, I like it. I like, I like the idea of somebody being able to, like, really have a lot of use of their lake shore, and not just something to look at. I, I like the idea of the flexibility. I personally have nothing against accessory dwelling units. I question the whole merit of wanting to limit the, you know, use of an accessory structure for someone to sleep in, but I'd say that maybe that's beyond this conversation. I think it's practical to allow for plumbing, kitchenettes, whatever people want to have down at the lake. I mean, think about some of these properties. If somebody wants to, you know, serve food, or hang out down at the lake, and whether it's using the bathroom, or storing drinks, and thinking they have to go. and whether it's using the bathroom or storing drinks and thinking they have to go travel all the way up to the house to grab the stuff to come back down when they've got family activities or kids, I think it's pragmatic to allow for as much flexibility down at the lake. The one thing I would bring up, I think it was Kennelworth where they had a stipulation about sightlines. And I would just, I'd bring it up as a question. Is that something we would want to consider if we're going to allow for this flexibility with accessory structures down at the lake? Do we want to add anything about sightlines from the neighboring property just to allow for each property to have its quiet enjoyment or, you know, let's say views towards the lake not being impeded by, let's say, a, a boathouse that has a sloped roof and it now is blocking part of the view from the neighbors?
That's a good question.
Yeah, a lot of communities use the phrase, and I was trying to understand this, allowable view and access corridor is what they're using, they use in their boathouse ordinances. So I don't know, maybe.
So can, maybe it's helpful. What, what communities are you looking at? Because, you know, obvious, it sounds like you've done a lot of research.
Ours, I've looked at some in, again, Wisconsin, Michigan, just, you know, some of the, in many cases, Wisconsin's considered some of the, you know, gold standard of this. So again, I'm looking for verbiage and concepts and ideas, not necessarily what works in a small community in Wisconsin is applicable to Wiscon, is, is applicable to us, but their ideas. So yeah, this phrase, you guys heard this, so many use the term allowable view and access corridor when they were referring to the limitation on where a boathouse could be placed.
So I'll, I'll tell you from a land use perspective, that's, you know, we don't generally have a view protection ordinance. I don't know if those communities already have view protection ordinances. I mean, it's a tricky thing. But, I mean, that's why I wanted to know the communities because, you know, there's many places in California and Seattle and those places that have, you know, very established rights to view protection that I don't know if we have. But I, I mean, we can talk about that. I, I would agree. I think it's important to allow people to, if they have a shower or something at their boathouse. I think, I don't want to, personally, and I, I've been on the record on this, I don't want to micromanage what people can justifiably do. Otherwise, are we denying them the fair use of their property? And I, but I think we can, I want to hear from other people.
As far as a lake, as a lake house, I mean, the boathouse, I think that was, you know, many communities don't allow it. I thought it was, we're all trying to be practical and, and work with our, after listening to the lake front owners, I said, you know what, that makes perfect sense to me too. Let's get a, you know, let them use the boathouse, let them do it. Let's make sure it's not oversized. As far as the plumbing goes, if this was a flat lake, hey, I get it. I get the kitchenettes, I would want to, I'd want to do it. This is just different with the bluffs. I would have to make sure there's no, you know, if we're asking not to do that, you got to plum and you got to go into the buffs to plum and get it up. If this is a flat lake, it'd be a no-brainer. It just isn't. So I just want to be very careful that we're not, in, in trying to do the boathouse and, which I think is a fantastic idea, don't exacerbate a problem and all of a sudden dig into the bluff just to get plumbing down.
Yeah, so I just, sorry.
Just for clarification, most of these for steep slope installations of utilities are most of the time now in modern technology are directional board. So there'd be no open cutting. They would directional board from the top to the bottom. You'd have a certain amount of cover. Most accessory structures like that that are beachfront are, have disconnects at the top of the table land. So like your irrigation system, they can blow lines out to say, okay, if it's, if it's winter time, nobody's going to be in an ancillary structure taking a shower, right? So they, they can disconnect if, if need be for the protection of it. If it is something that they want to use in the winter months, it's directional board, so it's protected. It comes down, it comes up and then into the structure.
So it's minimal?
It's minimal to zero.
Invasiveness of the bluff?
And that's, again, we're not trying to be overly restrictive. We're just trying to be smart about the protection and what we're doing. We're not going to do one thing good and all of a sudden do, have bad, we're just trying to understand it better. So if it works, I have no problem with it, but if it doesn't, I do.
Bridget?
I think staff did a great job on these. I think that it was thoughtful, it was tailored to an ECA. It used a lot of learning that other communities used and then took it and made it our own. And I like them. I'm open to discussing some of these tweaks that people have, but I'm comfortable with them the way they are. And I thank you guys for all of your hard work. I know it took a lot of time and a lot of studying.
I, I, I agree with that. Back on the boathouse, and I think it is a nice amenity to have down there for sure. I do think that the definite, the two boat width is a little ambiguous to me. I don't know where that, I mean, some boats are really wide and some are not very wide. And I think most towns, what I saw, even towns in the area, Kennelworth included.
Yeah, in our area.
You know, there's, you know, it's a square footage area of some sort. So I think we should go back to the drawing board on that just to define the width a little bit, the size of the boathouse that we're talking about.
And there's a lot of precedent.
There is. I mean, it's, it's, there's no community, it seems, that you could have your boathouse the entire width of your property. As an example, I mean, if you had two yachts as a two boat definite, I mean, it's just not a clear enough definition.
And in fairness to the homeowner, I mean, if you're hiring an architect to design something.
Let's, let's get something that is a little clearer.
Parameters that they can work with.
And I'm, I'm fine, Jim, what you're saying on the plumbing, I think that, that's fine.
So a 38-foot long boat, a 15-foot long boat.
I think that's a question, like, yeah.
Well, I think there's, there's a hall, the hall will limit it, right?
Kennelworth is 150 square feet.
Well, I've got.
150 square feet is not very large.
No, it's like 15 by 10.
It's a bathhouse, that's not a boathouse.
15 by 10?
Yeah, no, it's not very big.
I think I found another community was 200 square feet. So I mean, I think that that's, maybe we don't have to decide that today. That's something we could do a little research on.
I think we tried to keep it somewhat contained, so it offered flexibility depending on the size of boat that an owner may want. I can think of, living in Lake Forest, I can think of.
Two-car garage is 400 square feet.
You know, boats that are 25 feet and then you've got something, somebody has a 15-foot.
Or you have a Hobie Cat, which is wider.
Or your jet ski.
Right.
Here's one that's 20 feet wide.
So we could evaluate it on a case by case.
400 square feet for a tiny hat.
I think for the extreme sized boats, I think that was.
But those aren't Lake Michigan going boats, Kim.
Lakes greater than 5,000 acres.
The equipment that gets it in is that's going to determine the width.
How, how are you bringing it from the lake into it? Are you dry storing it? Are you raising it? Are you elevating it? We would have to.
Maybe we can look at some precedent on that and incorporate that.
But I, I'll just add to that. I personally like, don't want to constrict the use. I, I like the idea of encouraging this type of use. It is a differentiator for us as a community and I think it will add value to lots.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
So the size is something that you're going to have to come back to us, David. And I think it's important that we, you know, are realistic about what goes out on Lake Michigan for a pleasure craft for somebody who lives on Lake Michigan. And then understand what that is and make sure that we can accommodate those needs. I mean, 400 feet is tiny. I mean, it really is, Kim.
I'm not necessarily suggesting that. I'm saying that there are lots of, many communities have ordinances. And the point, my point is primarily that we give the homeowner some, some standards or parameters to work within and not something that is vague, that then they come to have it approved and we go, ooh, no, we don't like that. I mean, that's not fair after they've spent money for an architect and had, had their dream first.
I agree. But I think, I think we should be realistic on what, what people generally use, you know? I mean, a good example, I can't fit my truck in my garage, but every other car can fit, you know, a regular car can fit in the garage. I don't have an expectation that my truck will fit in any normal residential garage.
That's exactly right.
Right?
Can I just continue on with my thoughts? I thought the, the lot consolidation, I had no comments on that. I thought that was clean and perfectly fine as far as I'm concerned. Ordinary high watermark, you know, I viewed it just as the front lot line and that that would be the lot line that would be determined for zoning generally in terms of size of the property. And I guess I didn't get too deep into that. It seemed fine to me, so we can go back and look at it, but I was generally fine with that. So I thought the ordinary high watermark was fine. Just a couple of thoughts I had on the ordinance itself. Are we talking about other thoughts on the ordinance? And bear with me for one second here. We talked about the boathouse. On page 70, where we, where the retaining walls are discussed. And, and I actually did lay this out Glencoe's ordinance, not that we needed to mimic it 100%, but I did look for differences. On page 70 and 71, on the retaining walls, the Glencoe ordinance, and maybe you can explain this to me, Jim and David and Caleb, retaining walls cannot be used to increase the table land. In Glencoe, it's period unless, and we have, unless it's necessary for slope stabilization. Number two, retaining walls cannot be used to create a shelf or other table area within the slope transition area, period. And then the backfilling of the retaining wall is not permitted unless it's necessary for stabilization. So I don't know why we're adding those to items one and two unless it is necessary. I mean, it seems to me that retaining walls should not be used to increase the table land, period.
Well, and actually, David, that's what your presentation here said. It just says can't increase table land.
Plus it's, that's just an abbreviation.
Okay, so I don't know why we, I would say we don't need to have that. I mean, we're saying that if you're, you have a retaining wall and you have to backfill it for stabilization, you can do that. That's fine, but you're not putting in retaining walls to increase your table land. So I would take those out. And the same on page 11 or 71, those one and two points, same thing. I would take the last part of those sentence unless there is a reason that I'm missing.
Well, I, I might have been the one who suggested that because I know of a couple of situations where the house foundation is pretty close to the slope. And so then you might need to increase some of the table land to stabilize the foundation of the existing structure. And so you would technically, potentially get into a situation of unintended consequence by saying you can't ever increase the table land. You might need to stabilize something pretty, you may need to add a couple of feet, not for, you know, usable, but other than to shore up a foundation.
I wondered, Tina, if that's, if that's contained in item three. I mean, where we say the backfilling.
I think so, yeah.
Well, no, that, that's different because you would, because on one, you would be increasing the area of the table land.
Correct.
I have a hard time just even imagining it, the concept of retaining wall in the steep slope zone or the transition zone. I mean, I just, I, when I read this, I kept trying to picture it, you know?
I think that's where it happens though.
Yeah.
It is.
Well, I mean, you know, it happens in a lot of places. I mean, because you can engineer it, right?
Well, you know.
I, I just don't see where.
Yeah, my guess is, Tina, if, I think that, that this ordinance provides for, if you say there are a few, you can imagine a few situations where that could.
Sure, yeah.
I think the director of engineering and the village manager could probably make a ruling that you could do that. But I think that generally for this purpose, I think we should say that you don't increase the table land through use of retention walls.
And having to do so is truly an exception.
So it's not enough to say.
It should be an exception.
So I guess, just to, just to challenge that a bit. Because if we say, the way it's written now, it does give the director of engineering flexible. But if we say period, no retaining walls cannot be used to increase table land, that forces to somebody to come in for variance.
I think that's right. I think that's right.
Right, yeah, I'd be good with that.
I mean, that, that, that's just my thought on it. So that was, that my thought, we talked about the boathouses. We've got the vegetation plan in here, Kirk, which is nice. You know what? I didn't, I didn't have much else.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty, very well crafted.
Yeah.
And it reflected our last study session and all the other hard work that everybody's been doing together. So thank you. Those, your points are covered.
Other thoughts, comments?
Question on the vegetation. I think it's to the point, but I guess the question is, is the proposed language what we're thinking in its entirety? And will that be enough to compel homeowners to provide or plant native plantings and deep rooted plants and whatnot? Or is, would there be other supplemental guidelines or things that would be attached to this?
So Caleb, you had shared with us some resources that we could add into our engineering guidelines. You want to elaborate on a couple of those sources for us?
Yeah, definitely. You know, I think kind of the gold standard on, you know, at least of the communities in the North Shore who provide that type of guidance is Highland Park. They have quite a bit of resources, recommendations, guidelines. What, what plants you should plant, what, what are the native vegetation, where should you plant it? There are other guidelines from, I know Lake County really focused on stormwater management sites. So quite often they're located in ravines and bluffs and they provide some really good recommendations. So it, it could be provided, you know, providing the, the resources for the residents. Yeah.
I, I would encourage us to provide those supplements to encourage, you know, in terms of thinking from a sustainability lens.
I agree.
You know, the idea that we talked about last time, putting it back better than we found it. I think anything we can do to make it easier for homeowners when they're working with architects, landscape architects, contractors, to, you know, a little bit of plug and play so they don't have to. It's, it's, it's to the point, but it appears vague not being a landscape architect. I'm like, well, what does that really mean?
Yeah, I think we were trying to be specific on one specific document only. As part of the review with the coastal engineer and as well as myself, we'll look at what they're proposing and then determine if we think they need a little bit more and help guide them. But we can put their resources on the webpage to help them as they're moving along through the process.
I think, I think there were like at least two or three significant resources that we could add to the, you know, the information that residents could use so that you're not planning invasives or something that isn't going to be best for the coast.
Yeah, and again, it takes time, but I know a couple of times I've talked about some of the communities. I think Highland Park is one that has a brochure of living, living on the ravines or living on the lake with a lot of this, I'll say softer, less efficient, or less official information that's really helpful about vegetation and stewardship, et cetera. Something one day when we have nothing else to do, we can write the brochure.
Yeah, get the policy down and let me have it at that.
Something like that would be of value. I'm not being flip, so.
Other thoughts, comments?
I, I think they did, just as I said, I, I think the fact it shows the kind of work that was done on this because we brought this down to a few clarifications versus any type of impediment, a substantial, yes, a real issue. So it shows the good work that was done collaboratively with the board and the staff, so thanks.
Yeah, I do have one question. It's, it's one of those nerdy builder questions, but I need Ben to weigh in on it and David to kind of clarify. On page 54, you mentioned in the plan and permit requirements, it makes reference to description of proposed means and methods for the work. And then it's, you know, reflecting that that's somewhere in the, in the ordinance, which I, I couldn't find. And, and I'm, I'm always a little nervous about being prescriptive on means and methods of construction because it just opens up a whole level of liability. And maybe Ben, maybe municipalities don't suffer from the same liabilities that the private sector does. But, you know, the one thing that I do know is that people avoid approving means and methods like the plague because it just puts you in the line of liability if things don't work out the way that they should.
It's in the ordinance, Chris.
It is?
On page 76.
And I was probably bleary eyed by the time I got to that.
Yeah, I can see, understand that. Page 76 near the, you know, the whole permit process is quite involved, obviously. And item two talks about means and methods and.
So necessary, unnecessary, do we want to be getting into means and methods ever?
Well, part of the reason is you have standards in here that talk about length of time, that the slope can be undisturbed.
Yep.
And trying to minimize that. Well, that can be impacted by the means they do the work, right? So it may not be prescribing to them what, but they need to demonstrate how they're going to, for the shortest period of time, disturb portions of the slope during their work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just concerned that approving means and methods implies that we somehow are complicit with what they're doing.
So I think there's two other pieces to it, I think, one of which is looking at the means and methods to make sure it's not destructive. You know, whether it's a timing issue or something else that is going to jeopardize the bluff. The other issue you brought up is liability, which is we do have toward immunity. And so, you know, if we issue a permit, we have broad immunity and, you know, and and don't, don't face, you know, the risk of somebody saying, well, you, you approved this method.
Right.
For your response. We are different than obviously private parties. We are different than obviously private parties. But I don't think also, the way that I read it, is it's not prescribing a method. It doesn't say we will evaluate and approve a method. Rather, it just says a permit application must contain a written description of the proposed means and methods. But it's not as if, if, if David is going to be saying you must conduct the construction only in this manner with this equipment in, in this specific way. Rather, he, he can put conditions on it and there will be, and if they're, they're going to propose it, yes, we can enforce it, but it's not as if we put out a brochure saying, this is, you know, here's the playbook, exactly how you do it, and this is your only option. But, you know, and, and I don't know that that's that different than a normal building process in which somebody says whether-
It is.
Well, no, no, what I was going to say, when they come for us for the building permit, you know, and there are questions that we ask, whether it's use of public ways, traffic plans, go down the list. A lot of times on building permits, we will put on conditions that are affecting means and methods. Now, I don't think it's as detailed as you have to use this type screw only, though some of that's prescribed in a building code. So I don't see it as a big liability risk, but if it's something that you're uncomfortable with, we can certainly work on the language.
Well, I'm uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable with it from the, from the private sector perspective because we work really hard in the development industry to avoid the liability, the potential blowback liability for approving what a contractor elects to do in executing his work. And maybe a disclaimer that, you know, the review will be for, you know, timeliness and appropriateness or something like that, or just something to make it clear that we aren't approving their means and methods, nor are we selecting, that it's, you know, strictly their selection and we're just reviewing it for compliance.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about it because that's language you see on a wetlands permit, for instance.
Oh, really?
You have to, you have to designate your means and method for what, you know, what kind, in, in, in compliance with a wetland permit, you know, when you're mitigating things. So I think it's really to get at the impacts, not like the means and method for, you know, how you're going to put in your concrete structures, right? I think it's, you know, what size of equipment, how, how, how big is it going to be, how destructive it's going to be? I think that's more what you guys were looking at, right? Rather than the engineering review would sign off on, you know.
Yeah, I, I think it really is just what's your approach to it? So for example, should somebody want to take a utility down the bluff and they say, we're proposing to open cut it, and we would say, no, there's a better way to do this. It's just the oversight. Explain to us how you're doing it, like a pre-construction kickoff meeting.
We can look at the language.
I'm not going to beat the dead horse. I'm just, I, I just know that from my perspective, it's something that I've had to deal with in the past.
Well, maybe, yeah, making it more specific so it really gets to the, you know, impact, the environmental impact of the proposed project.
We can look at the language and, and maybe propose some slight modifications.
I just don't think we want to be in a position to tell people how to execute their work. We can tell them how they shouldn't execute their work.
Right.
But we shouldn't be in a position to tell them.
But I think we're trying to minimize impacts.
Right, agreed.
I thought the permit section actually was a core section to this ordinance and goes a long way toward at least giving me comfort that it's going to be done right, you know, if applied properly. And it, because I thought it was fairly extensive and robust, so I, yeah, I mean, unless there's something that people with more knowledge than I find disturbing about that, I think it's, it's pretty good.
Cool. Okay, last shots before we go to open, open mic?
No, I think we've got a short list of follow-ups, really.
Yeah, doesn't sound. I will come back and, and ask for a straw poll after we hear public comment on whether this is something you guys want to move forward with or not. So what I'd like to do now is open the microphone up for public comment on this issue. Starting at the next meeting, we are going to have a sign-in sheet for public comment so that we don't have to do this first row, second row thing because it's clumsy and, you know, some people like to play the game of jumping around to have the last word and, you know, I'd rather just go with a sign-in sheet on going forward basis, Rob. So, anyway, first three rows, if you'd like to come up and share your thoughts, I'd be happy to hear you.
Leslie Graham, I live at ninety-four Mary Street, which is like one of the last houses in Weneka. I have a question about the consolidation of lots. The consolidation of lots. In doing some of the research leading up to this, I noticed that a lot of people have more than one lot. And maybe they haven't done anything, they just wanted open land. But ultimately, someone may want to buy those two lots, and I'm just curious what the concept is here, because I, I actually had never heard about this part of this steep slope. It's new news to me about the consolidation of lots. I'd never heard about that before. So I just had a question about that. And then I had a question about the retaining wall and table land portion. We live on a place where the, it's a hundred steps down to the beach at our place, so it's pretty high up. And as part of the stabilization of the bluff that we did, we did build in retaining walls along the bluff and some terracing. And that, from, you know, the, everybody that we worked with, the engineers, stabilized the bluff. So I'm questioning if those kind of things are considered in addition of table land or if that's just, you know, a, a, something that you can do. So that's my question to you guys. I don't know if you considered bluff terracing or extra areas, if that's considered table land addition, so that's.
What do you guys think?
Do you have questions?
No, the expectation would be the, the minimizing of the terracing.
Mm-hmm.
And to not extend the table land, but we've seen it as means to stabilize slopes.
Yeah, like the cantors, like you go down twenty stairs and they had to have a landing, just like you wouldn't a home. There's sort of a landing and then there's more stairs. I don't think that is-
Well, one of them is about, you know, twenty by ten. I mean, it's a decent size and it, I mean, to me, this sounds like it's, that's a no, which the engineers said that was a good thing to have done. So I'm just trying to get a feel.
Can I ask a question about that? Did you do the terracing because it was so steep and it was hard to get stabilization otherwise?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so based on the new ordinance, you could still let the staircase go down, but the creation of large, larger gathering areas would not be permitted. The use of retaining walls for stabilization would be permitted, just not the creation of the larger patio areas, which that would be classified.
And I'm just curious why? I mean.
To, to preserve the bluff in its current state at the direction of what we're developing.
Is, is, is there research been done that says that that is a problem to the bluff? Because, I mean, there is a retaining wall in each one of those spots, it's just a bit more of flat land. I'm just, I'm just, I just need the science. I don't know the, the science of it.
The retaining walls can be permitted, minimized. It's just the creation of the additional table land for, for a gathering space as based on the proposed amendment.
I understand, but like, is the science that that's a problem?
Well, the idea is if you increase the table land, you potentially could change the slope, which could potentially move the, the buildable area one way or another. And so the idea is, is to allow the topography to define the slope and the steep slope zone and all the other technical terms we've been listening to tonight. And you could artificially expand, change that by moving the table land out further or in, I guess.
It does get to the concept that every bluff is different.
Right.
Because ours is a hundred feet up. It's, it's a huge space versus like down by Elder or somewhere where it's very close. I just, I think you probably have to look at this a little bit more than, to me, than, than what I'm hearing just for the entire, you know, I don't know, stretch from, we're, we're beyond Tower all the way to.
Yeah, it's, the, the main goal is it would change the topography of the bluff artificially? It's not, the retaining wall itself to stabilize the bluff would be permitted, but the creation of additional table land would artificially change the topography of it, and that would not be permitted based on the codes.
Okay, I mean, and then the consolidation concept, given how many people own double lots, triple lots already, can we just talk about that a little bit?
Sure, we, I'll talk about it because I think initially it was one of my ideas back in June when, when we were moving some of these other things forward. If you were to buy four or five lots right down the block here and you combined them into one, and then you built a ten thousand or twelve thousand square foot house in a neighborhood that has three thousand square foot houses, it would consume the block face. It would, it would create a change in the character of the, of the neighborhood. Much like the Ishbia property, when you combine five lots together, gave him the ability to build a very, very, very large structure. So by limiting the amount of land that can be combined together into a buildable parcel, you're fundamentally also controlling the size of what may ultimately go there when you do that combination. Makes sense?
Okay. Yeah, and, and the other issue is it's a formal process, like a plat of subdivision. If somebody bought the five lots and wanted to build a large structure, before we would even contemplate looking at the project, they would have to go through a plat of lot consolidation, so the opposite of a subdivision. And so that would, so if you own two lots and you're thinking, well, maybe when we sell our lot, and you have two legal lots, nobody's saying that you can't sell off that other lot. This is just truly for people who want to combine, you know, out of, you know, keeping it in context for the neighborhood so that you can't, so it's, would only be if you are forced or want to consolidate all the lots. If you have two legal lots, you have two pins, nobody's going to change that.
Unless someone buys those two lots from you in one false swoop and wants to build a house.
Yeah, and then it would fall under this two and a half times the, the, for the context. So that's pretty large.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks, next please. Come on up, Christina.
Thank you. I just wanted to identify the steep slope elements of the Weneka Park District's Elder Centennial Plan. They are two, the ADA pathways at Centennial and the emergency vehicle and maintenance vehicle path at Elder. And so I reached out to District Thirty-Six, Nutria, and the North Shore Special Recreation District. District Thirty-Six is spending three point eight million of their referendum funds on ADA access. Nutria sent research stating that seven percent of the general population, according to Pew Research, is impacted by physical limitations and other disabilities that affect their access. So for a town the size of Weneka, that's approximately eight hundred people. NSSRA has about a hundred and sixty-five placements and program registrations for fifty participants. Accessibility and emergency vehicle pathways are central to our mission at the Park District and for us as citizens of Weneka. And so I think that ADA and emergency vehicle access deserve our respect and attention in the steep slope planning process. Thanks.
Thanks. No? Christina, when you bring in your plan, obviously it'll be with a special use application and the totality of, of what you're doing and the character of the applicant is, is obviously going to be considered as that works its way through the process. Next, please. Just anybody who wants to speak?
A little surprised, I thought there'd be more people talking. Anyway, I know that, you know, at past meetings I was said that, you know, since I'm not, don't live there, I shouldn't really be allowed to say anything, but I'm still going to say a couple of things. So I think overall this is a good thing. Now, I was thinking back to my tunnel. Back in two thousand and eleven, we wanted to have a, I wanted to have a tunnel between my detached garage and my house, but it was shot down because of, you know, zoning things and the amount of space, primarily because the village said, well, then it would be an attached garage. And, you know, arguably, maybe, but I didn't have a team of lawyers that could go and fight for me and beat this to death. And I was thinking about that as I was listening to everyone up here talk about the extreme deference that's being given to owners along the lakeshore, along the steep slope. And I think that's great. I'm glad that people consider that. But on the other hand, you know, this village has lots of things, lots of ordinances, lots of rules that limit the public's use of their property. My dream would have been to have a tunnel. I couldn't have that because of village rules. And so I think it's very reasonable for these ordinances to go through. I think they're a good starting point. I haven't really thought about them enough to know where all the loopholes will be. I'm sure there are. But, I mean, it certainly is a reasonable starting point, and at least I'm glad that we're moving forward in that direction. Sad that it didn't happen last year. Have a nice day.
Thank you, Ted. Others, come on up.
Excuse me, Joanna Karatsis, I live on Providence. I had a kind of a minor question. You were talking about the boathouses and the height of the boathouses and occupying it, like, let's say they're capped at fifteen feet and you want to create a terrace or a deck on top. Wouldn't the railing necess, that would be necessary according to code for people to use the rooftop deck, then make the height closer to eighteen and a half feet? I mean, would you, like, I don't know if you've considered that. My next question is, or thing to think about. My understanding is that garage, like the common garage on the tree streets are capped at about thirteen feet of height. So I don't understand why there's a difference between what's on the lake and what's on, you know, the common streets of Weneka. So, you know, I hope you think about that. I don't think I'm wrong in thinking if somebody's going to occupy a rooftop, it needs a railing. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
And I'm, I'm really glad you're considering this, this steep slope and all the work you've done. I'm really happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Sorry, I'm a little bit stiff. You guys must be in pain for various reasons. My name's Rob Schreisheim, I live at six fifty-six Maple Street. Thank you to all you guys for doing the amount of work that you, that you do. It's, it's not an enviable task. My question revolves around the concept of the ordinary high watermark, and I certainly am not an expert on any of this, but if I understand it correctly, based upon what I've read and, you know, we engaged our own licensed coastal engineer who does a lot of work up and down Lake Michigan, and I probably should have my head examined, then I know more than I want to know at this point and less than I probably should know, honestly. But my understanding of the ordinary high watermark is that at one point in time, the IDNR, the state body, and the federal body, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, agreed on an average for all of Lake Michigan, and that was five hundred and eighty-one point five. It's not precise, it's an average. It moves. And what's happened over time now is that when there is a permit application, again, my understanding, could be right, could be wrong, is that there is what's known as a delineation report. And you have somebody that's like a certified coastal engineer or the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers go out and do the field analysis, which is actually a quite comprehensive analysis. I don't know what it looks like, I've never read one. It's three or four pages of charts and it's three or four pages of text, and then it's submitted to the Army Corps of Engineers for approval. And my understanding is that while the average was set at five eighty-one point five, I, I read a guideline from the DNR in November of two thousand and fourteen that referenced the guideline set in nineteen eighty-five, something like that. And in recent years, there hasn't been anything less than five eighty-two or five eighty-two point five. I think I saw that Kennelworth was at five eighty-two point three. And the reason why this becomes important, again, my understanding, I think you're the marine engineer or the civil engineer, I looked at your background. My understanding is the reason it becomes important is because it sort of defines the amount of beach under the public trust doctrine that the public can walk on. And if I understand it roughly, a heuristic, is that if you look at the Y-axis and the X-axis, for every one foot of height, it's fifteen to twenty feet of length. So on the one hand, when I first started hearing about the ordinary high watermark, I was like, what's the big- I was like, what's the big deal? Half a foot, a foot, two feet, seems all the same to me. But every foot is 15 or 20 feet of public beach that's theoretically lost to people that want to walk on the beach. So I know that there is this discussion, and I could be wrong about all this, by the way. I know there's this discussion about the steep slope and the setback requirements. And I think the ordinary high watermark is connected to all of that in sort of a holistic way. So all I would say is as you're going through this process, and I think it's great, you're going through a very transparent process and study and all the issues, it seems like there's still a lot of ambiguity about what exactly is the significance of the ordinary high watermark and how does it relate to the overall issues that you're trying to address. So I would just give you kudos for the work that you've done this far transparently and maybe suggest that you look for, look to understand with more clarity how this relates and, and if there isn't some language that you can arrive at in defining the high, the ordinary high watermark and how it might be helpful and applicable. That's it. Thank you.
Well, yeah, and thank you for, again, for raising this issue. It's complicated because I feel like what we did here with this ordinary high watermark was kind of an add-on. It was something that was challenging our community development department because we have this, you know, and we went through it with the Ishbia property, looking at all these different surveys with the moving property line, that when you lock this thing down at 581, that five years from now, absent an adjustment by the Army Corps, the line on the table land is going to be the same today as it was five years ago. If we use the, at Water's Edge, that build-to line on the, on the table land moves back and forth, given where the water is. So when we were having the big storms and the water was right up against the bluff, that pushed the build-to line or the setback line on the table land back or west generally. Now that it's receded, all of a sudden, the property gets bigger because we're measuring the zoning calculations from it. It has nothing to do with our bluff regulations, and we don't need any more comments on it. But it was really intended to clean up a challenge that our zone, that our zoning administrators are having when establishing a line and then trying to justify it based on surveys. Yes, we get a new survey every time, and we've seen the property line move back and forth, back and forth, five times. Mr. Shreisheim, you're done. Thank you.
Well, one thing you could do is, because you brought it up and you've been talking about it for quite a bit tonight, it seems you've asked for open, open comments.
Three minutes, yes.
It doesn't seem appropriate to shut, shut the person down. And I, this is the first time in the 30 years I've lived here I've actually stood up to speak. So it seems to me I deserve the courtesy of 30 more seconds, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
You, what you could do is you could look at the open high watermark language and just simply say, it should be delineated in the field by a coastal engineer following federal, i.e., U.S. Army Corps of Engineers standard procedure, and a report created for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer review and approval. Period on the story. And that would solve your, your problem, probably. And I do think it relates to your steep bluff and bluff issues as well.
Well, Ben, but, but, again, this is for zoning, and Mr. Shreisheim brought up the public trust doctrine.
This has nothing to do with-
This does not have anything to do with the public trust doctrine and walking in the water or anything like that, does it?
It's just to measure the setback line.
No, I know, it's zoning. No, it's to measure the whole lot.
That is correct.
Right. It's only-
That's a different issue if you're talking about public trust or property line.
Right.
And that's, that's different than what we're talking about, which is purely a zoning calculation-
Correct.
-for setback purposes.
And importantly, it closed the gap because we added the language that, on the page 64 to 85, that we put in there to make sure that it was kind of closed as a gap, that for the determination of the lot line. So it's just purely within the zoning context.
The idea was to simplify it so that it would be easily identifiable across the village without having to rely on a plat of survey to establish what the build, build-to line would be or the setback line would be under any certain situation. There's a predictability to the, to the, and Kim, I see you don't agree, but I don't, I don't, right now what we have is, depends on, did the survey happen on Tuesday? Did it happen on Thursday? Did it happen in January? Did it happen in May? I mean, we see the water line going back and forth, and that's what this was, was attempting to do, was to just define it and clarify it so that there was some predictability. Now, certainly, a homeowner could go out and hire an engineer to establish this, but I don't see what the purpose of that would be. Now you're, you have a build-to line based on, again, an examination and a, and a, and a survey that is done at a point in time. And maybe six months from now, everybody will say, well, wait a minute, if you resurvey it now, the setback line could be different, given whatever criteria you use to do those sort of things. We're just trying to simplify it, period. There isn't anything about public trust in this. There's nothing about whether you can walk in the water or, at least that's my understanding, it's just simply to make the line easier to define across the village without having to go through a lot of controversy and interpret multiple plats of survey to determine how you're going to get that, that build-back line.
Just for a point of clarification, so a delineation report is typically, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but a delineation report is required for permits that are non-regional issued type permits. Regional permits are issued by the Army Corps and IDNR, and they're for basically programs that are already permitted uses. When you are doing something that's a non-regional one, where you have to get a special one, they ask for a delineation report because they want the exact detail of it.
We're just looking for a line that we can do a building permit for. It's just that simple. It's to do a zoning calculation and, and issue a building permit. Right, David?
That was the direction we thought the council was working.
Okay. It isn't all this other stuff, I guess, is the point. And maybe there is a better way of delineating it, but I don't know what that is. Now we have more people.
Just, just one more-
Come on up.
Just Mary Tritely, 330 Willow Road. Just a quick question or clarification. Are homeowners, do homeowners on the lakefront have the ability to get more clarification on what this specifically means for their properties between now and when you're, you know, actually voting on this? And I ask specifically, our, our property has two very different slopes. The north end is very steep, the, the south end is not. That could impact probably where we would do some, where somebody might do something. I'm not going to do anything, but, so I just wanted to find out if that's something that the, you know, that the village is open to and make sure that we have that access. Thanks.
I don't know how to answer that. I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so if, first, to get as accurate as possible, you would need to have a topographical survey?
Oh, sorry. You would need to have a topographical survey of your property to sit down and go over it with you to see exactly. In the absence of that, all we have are the topo lines or the contour lines I showed earlier from 2017. Again, it's topo lines over an aerial. Again, we could come up with a best estimate or approximation of how it may impact it. But without that topographical survey, we can't tell you exactly where it would be.
And it sounds like that might be a compound situation if she, if you have, I think, you know, based on what you're describing, Mary.
I have one question before I, is anybody else, would anybody else like to speak? Come on up, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry I came late, so I didn't hear all the comments, but we moved to Weneka specifically so that we could walk the beach. And, and I don't mean climb over rocks to then get on the beach, climb over rocks, which is probably what's going to happen at Elder and Centennial. It's not going to be a smooth walk across. But my question is, when you were talking about boathouses, some of the boathouses now have ramps that go down into the water, and you actually can't cross those ramps. So what, I mean, and, and it's my right to walk the beach, and I can't get across the ramps. I think you need to consider how these ramps are going to work from boathouses. Also, there's some construction going on right now down at the end of Tower Road and the bottom of the ravines. And I do understand that it's supposed to be remedial, but, for the bluffs. But the number of rocks there is just unbelievable. And I, I think I, you left me a message about this. But I, I did take more pictures, more photos of it because they're digging deep down, and I don't know what they're doing there, but it looks like a lot of work on possibly village property. So I, I, I think that needs, there has to be oversight on that. Also, when people are building down on their beaches, these coves and whatnot, is there a, a time limit that they have, that they have to complete the work? Like, can I expect that those rocks that are on the beach there that's preventing me from walking along the beach, are those rocks going to be there all winter? Or do you, do you have a time limit for when things have to be completed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. And I'm, I'm happy to, as a follow-up from my voice message, I'm happy to, to speak with you later on about the project. But there are, the, the work that they're doing is part of an approved permit. It's the revetment remediation. So I can follow back up with you on it. Sure. I have some from today.
Others?
I actually came here tonight to just listen, but I feel the need to actually speak. My name is Cynthia Harrow. My husband, Michael, here is here in the audience as well. I live at 411 Sheridan Road. I also have 391 Sheridan Road, 401, and 387. So what you're all doing here impacts every one of my properties. I sent an email out inviting you all to come two by two, to come and see my finished property because I, I feel like my neighbor's property down the street that got everybody in an uproar. I, I don't know the man personally, so I don't even want to mention his name, but I'm sure you all know who I'm talking about. I, I feel like this got everybody doing what you're doing now. And I was in that same position about 15 years ago. And I kind of have PTSD standing here because I had to do that with a whole different crowd of you. But first and foremost, when you're a, an owner of a property, especially on the lakefront, the, the primary thing you want to do when you're, you're thinking about building on it is you want to protect it. You want to protect your neighbor's property. You want to shore them up so that you know that there's no damage that's going to happen to your neighbor's property or to your property when you're building it. And I've heard a lot of people say, you know, all of this land is being taken out and it looks like a quarry, and how can it ever be put back together? Well, the truth of it is, because I went through it every day of my life for seven years, is when you do it properly, when you have structural engineers, mine were the ones that did the Willis Tower, was Sears Tower, now Willis Tower, they take great pains to do things precisely and even go overboard, especially in a village like this, because they want to make sure that what they're doing, they're doing it correctly. And as a homeowner, investing your money in that property, knowing your family's going to live there and that you're in a community that, you know, really respects what you're doing, you want to do it right. So even though everybody was in an uproar about what our neighbors to the south are doing, I believe that their first and foremost, their effort would be to do it properly because that's what we did. And I welcome any of you to come, two by two, to come and see the finished result of when it does look like a quarry and what it looks like when it's finished. And I guess I feel like it's a privilege to live here. I've always been honored to live here. I've lived on the lakefront for 60 years of my life. And, you know, I don't own the lakefront. I'm its caretaker. I'm the person that has to watch over it. I'm the person that has to pay for the rocks to be put in, the revetment. I welcome the people that come across my property, and when I'm out there, I speak with them because I, it's, it's a privilege, and I respect the privilege of being able to live on the lake. But I think sometimes the people that don't live on the lake, they don't understand what the homeowners that live on the lake have to go through, what we have to do, some of the sacrifices we have to do to be able to make that property secure and to make it walkable for other people and to be good neighbors and to do it by the letter of the law. So I stand here today and ask you because it's not just a short-term problem, it's a long-term problem. It's an issue that will impact not just myself, but I have a 30-year-old daughter who's just moved to Weneka. It will impact her life and where she lives and how she does it and if she wants to live on the lakefront. And these kind of issues will impact how an architect will determine how to build a house. And when you give an architect too many constraints, you wind up with something that you're not really going to enjoy living in. And I know not everyone can live on the lake, there's not enough property to do that. I wish everyone could because it's a blessing. But those of us who do live on the lake, we respect it, we take care of it, we're its caretaker, and we put our trust in all of you when you're making these rules, that you'll think of us and how we live there, too. And if you haven't ever lived on the lake, you kind of have to understand that you're always going to be the caretaker, whether your house is there, whether you want to play on the beach, whether you want to, you know, plant the bluff. I can tell you that I personally, myself, planted 6,000 native grasses that would grow on the bluff to keep it-
Mrs. Harrow, we're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. But I just want you to know what you're doing. I appreciate your service, but I want you to really think about how it impacts people and how they live on the bluff.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Would anybody like to, else like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Now, I have one question for council before we get into a quickie straw poll on this. David made mention of this topo and, you know, how loosey-goosey the information is out there with GIS and overlaid topos and, and aerial photography and the like. It seems to me that, you know, we probably should invest in, in appropriate mapping so that we understand what the existing conditions are, no matter where these ordinances go, so that we have good, solid data that we can, that they can access and make decisions with. And maybe not. I mean, but it sounded like it was a bit on the expensive side. Is that not right, Rob?
So as David mentioned in his presentation, in order to get to a pretty reasonable approximation, we needed a month or so of work between the GIS consultant, Jim, and then David have to meet, literally look at each parcel to be able to map the impact of the proposed ordinance. To have a perfectly accurate one, you would need a topo survey for each property. And we weren't suggesting that.
Okay.
But we could get a pretty close approximation. Gentlemen, let me know if I've misrepresented you. Is that fair?
Sure.
Yeah? Okay. Yeah. It'd be close.
So the first question is, is that something that we should consider investing in to be able to graphically show the community what the impact is on various properties up and down the lakefront? You know, and then, and then we can run through the litany of what we're looking at tonight on the ordinance piece. Now, it sounds like everybody's okay with the, with the lot consolidation? I mean, I didn't, I didn't hear a lot of problem with that? No.
Nope.
No, there's no? So we're good? Yep. Okay, so that's something we can move forward on?
So just to be clear, you could move forward with the lot, if you, if the direction tonight would be to proceed with noticing for a public hearing, you could move forward with the lot consolidation if there's consensus to do so.
Are we good with that phrase about the table end? Did we all?
That's in the steep slope.
I was talking about-
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just for clarification, you know, for, because I know Leslie spoke about concern about it. I mean, it's, it just creates an enhanced process-
Right.
-that doesn't slow anything down because it's going to still stay, a lot consolidations already go to the plan commission for review- already go to the plan commission for review. So I think it's a very thoughtful, just gives us, you know, enhanced look process. So I think that it makes a lot of sense to separate that and move that ahead if that's interesting, something of interest.
Good with that?
Yes.
Okay. The one that seems to be causing all the confusion tonight, the lot line. I mean, Kim, I know you've got some concerns about it. You didn't, I mean, absent anybody being able to say this is something we can use to define the setback line better, I mean, maybe they have to come back with other potential ways of measuring this.
No, I mean, I guess I'm just looking at this map again. You know me and my numbers. I can't help it here. You know, if this is 581.5 and the slope goes like this, if it turns out this delineated survey or whatever says it's 582.5 and that's here, that's a whole different setback. Mine is-
Right, but that's just like the water's edge, right? I mean, depending on what happens at any given time.
I don't think anybody wants to go back to water's edge.
Right.
But-
I think it's just clarification of that. If that's, as you said, if that's the right thing, I just want to make sure that it is based upon what others have been doing.
Well, is the desire to push-
The best thing for Weneka.
And I'm stupid on this, okay? Is the desire to just push the setback line deeper into the property? If that's the case, then we should pick a different number.
No, not necessarily. Again, I guess I'll say it again. If that is a better practice and that is more customized to the particular property, but not as variable as water's edge, I just, I brought it out there as something we should consider.
Right.
I just didn't want to, I don't necessarily want to-
So we should have staff look, see what other dimensions are being used and maybe report back to us on that before we do anything?
That's fine. But either way, it's, I'm fully supportive of the OHWM and how we define it. So I think we could just research a little bit more.
Do you understand, David?
Yeah. Can you just bring back more inform- We'll bring back more information in terms of when someone goes out to delineate the ordinary high watermark on a particular piece of property and just give you a little idea of how much more, how less variable it will be from the water's edge, but more variable than using the ordinary high watermark of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer. Because that's really the reason why we looked, we're looking at something else is we were looking for something that was less variable.
Right.
So the ordinary high watermark by the U.S. Army Corps is going to be the least variable. The water's edge is going to be the most variable, and the ordinary high watermark is going-
Now, Caleb's not so sure about that.
Between. In terms of, we'll provide you more information to explain those three concepts, and then the council can decide which one provides the level of stability or consistency that you're looking for in changing it from the water's edge.
Well, can I ask a question, though? Will that mean, are we going down the direction that in addition to all the other engineering studies, people would have to come in with their own separate delineation of the ordinary high watermark? Or are we trying to pick a better standard?
I thought we were going, the ordinary high watermark is, that is the standard. Is it 581.5 or is, it's just that slight? Is there a way we should be looking at it a little bit differently?
Would that buy us much more? Would that be-
It may not.
Better, and it might not be.
We want to be as fair as we can both ways.
But either way, it should be ordinary-
So for clarification, though, so if you do a delineation to determine where the ordinary high watermark, it's not going to be 581, but it's going to be very inconsistent from the standard number, which is why the regulatory has used that standard number. So you, the requirement would be if someone, if we, it'd be hard for us to come back to tell you where the ordinary high watermark is based on the delineation without doing a major detail study.
I mean, this is not the property line. It's not the public trust doctrine line. This is just a line for zoning, not just setback, but zoning for the size of the property.
Correct.
For all zoning purposes. And, you know, I hear where you're coming from, Kim. I just, I'd say go with just the 581.5 and not get too complicated on this one.
Well, let's see if there's something else out there.
I don't want to spend a lot of, it should be ordinary high watermark if it can be slightly better, or that's fine. I mean, that would be great.
So that sounds like that one might be able to be pulled together and-
Pretty quickly.
Yes.
Pretty perfunctory. And on the steep slope, subject to a lot of the conversations we had relative to boathouses and plant lists and, I lost my notes again, the table land and, you know, certainly the boathouses sound like something that need a lot more definition, research and definitions so we can feel comfortable that we're allowing a reasonable amenity without being too restrictive, but at the same time, not allowing people to build second homes down there. So that one sounds like it's going to take a little bit more work.
Well, you have precedent.
Table land issue is the fill issue.
It's just the-
Those areas where you ask for the language to be changed.
Yes.
Okay. That's what I was trying to think of, table land. It was more than table land.
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as a boathouse, I mean, there's precedent. I mean, you have existing, I don't think it's going to take, it's not that complex of an ask, is it, guys? To say, here, okay, here, here's what we think we can come in on, just give two examples, and we just choose. I can't imagine it's going to be that complex.
We'll need to go and find out what-
Watercraft issue.
Standard watercraft would be on, show you, come up with a dimension of what that will be, and you will need to decide, is that, are you okay with disturbing the stability of the slope by allowing this boathouse of that size to be constructed on? It really is, you have made a decision to allow this type of structure on the bluff slope, right? And so you will need to decide how much you are willing to allow it to impact the stability of the slope.
Right.
Can I ask a question about that that probably was discussed at some point? And we have a two-car garage that's standard. Is there, just in the boating garage industry, such a thing or not? No, there's no, like-
Depends upon, again, it's on Lake Michigan versus Lake Okoboji in Iowa. I grew up around Lake Okoboji.
Again, I found, I found numerous ordinances that, you know, that range from 150 to 400 to 500 square feet. So, I mean, there's lots out there that we can look at a point of reference to say, how does that community compare to ours?
This one was, while Glencoe wasn't really specific, we did talk to them about how they would apply it. We did get a plan review letter from them, and so what you saw in here was similar to Glencoe, and we talked to their experience. They didn't have a lot of examples, so it's worthwhile to get some more data for you so you can get a comfort for it.
Yeah.
So, okay. But generally, we're all okay with where that's heading and you feel comfortable with the framework? Give or take?
Yep.
Okay.
What would be the next steps, timeline, et cetera, to move this along?
We're not going to hear it in December.
No?
How much work is, you need? Why not?
We are not going to make this large of a change in our zoning ordinance coming into the holidays because we will end up being criticized for the fact that people are out of town, that they're traveling, that they weren't able to make the meeting, that they weren't able to, I've been down that road way too many times. January's fine.
I'm just asking that because, you know, you have to remember when we had these discussions with lakefront, I mean, one of the things they were saying, do not take, we want certainty as fast as we can get it. Why is it taking so long? So I'm just trying to be-
But we're still well within the moratorium, too.
Good point.
Understand.
Just in terms of practical turnaround, I can't have this ready by a week from tonight because there's other agenda items and there's some work that we all have to do. So hopefully, we could turn this around for the first meeting in December, but that wouldn't, you'd still have to build in notice for a public hearing, so we still have to bring this back for your consensus and then notice a public hearing.
So the public hearing, Rob, would be a regular village meeting? It would not be a study session meeting?
It would not be a study session.
It would be a regular meeting. So you could bring, and that would be a public hearing where potentially it could be introduced?
You could do that.
So that-
David, how much time do we need to notice for a public hearing generally?
In the Weneka talk, we need to send the newspaper to the, the newspaper notice to the newspaper three weeks before the date of the public hearing.
So that's tight.
Can we use the record? Or it seems like it has a wider circulation now?
It's established by ordinance.
It is?
We've never used the record.
I'm not sure.
Just wondering, because, you know, I don't know how many people get the Weneka talk.
Yeah, the Weneka talk is the Chicago Tribune.
Right.
So we know it has the circulation standard. The record, I'm not sure that we'd be able to verify that.
So theoretically, you could have this for the public hearing, but, you know, if there was consensus at that public hearing to introduce it the first meeting in January, and then you could finish it the second, the second village meeting?
And then if you guys want to pull the moratorium off at that point in time, you can do that.
And then you're done?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know, Chris, if more people are out of town in December or January or, you know.
I've already heard from people who said, who have asked.
Okay. Well, yeah. Okay, well, January.
Lakefront people who have asked.
Okay.
I mean, this isn't a surprise. We've been at this for a year now.
What's that?
It's not a surprise. We've been working diligently for 11 months now, so.
Yes, we have. All right. Any other comments, thoughts, questions?
No.
Awesome. All right, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.